All right, we're live.
Hi. Welcome, everybody, to the Select Board Meeting Monday, October 21st, starting at 6:30. And we will open, as per usual, with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
I always want to say amen. Right, why do you want to say that?
All right, Dave, I want to chair the Select Board.
Marlo Harris.
Norma DeGlee. And I want to ask you all some procedures, other than we do things classroom-style announcements.
We have, I've forgotten the trick-or-treating hours. Do you remember?
Five to eight.
Five to eight. And I am still waiting for the recommendation to come from the consultant regarding the bridge. But I think things are going along well. The state was very pleased with what the results were, so I think that should help.
Should also probably plug trunk-or-treat again at the safety building.
Yeah, I was gonna say regarding trick-or-treat, trunk-or-treat at the safety building, or, sorry, not trunk-or-treat, truck-or-treat.
Truck-or-treat.
At the safety building is at the same time, from five to eight. So that should be great as well, and thank you to them for stepping up and returning to doing that. Anything further for announcements?
Not for me.
All right, that moves us on to appointments, which none are listed. Do we have any surprise appointments?
We do not.
All right, on to the budget.
And our first victim would be Brenda.
Come on down!
And I will give you...
Oh, that's not in here.
No, I'm kidding. Brenda, I gave them the cemetery first.
He likes his surprises.
He's just trying to bury us.
Yes. Says, "Here you go, surprise!"
What's it? Oh, cemetery, okay.
So Brenda and I met today, and we talked about the cemetery budget.
And this is it? Any questions?
Okay, sold, no.
So you had, you had a... The stipends you left the same.
Yep.
The contracted services you left the same, and that's for the maintenance by the mowing.
That's the mowing, the weed whacking.
And weed-whacking, yeah.
Yep.
But you did increase the supplies and repairs, and you did that. I made a note over here, thirteen thousand for trees.
Yep.
To be removed, and twenty-five hundred for lime and fertilizer.
Yep.
And in the...
And ten thousand dollars to replace the money that we used for the repairing of the stones.
Right, and I suggested to Brenda that that, obviously, if it came to wanting to replace that money, that would have to go on the warrant article for the trust funds to deposit into that.
Well, we'll do, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So previous ones were showing, for example, forty-five hundred in supplies, repairs.
Yep.
And I know you would have justified all of those numbers perfectly the last time, but what was the, since this is slating all of it for trees and lime and fertilizer, what was it previously used for, and do we need additional in there for that?
So this year, we did a lot of work. Did we take any money out of that for, for Neil?
What we took for Neil was all of it came out of the Capital Reserve Fund, with the exception of what you had encumbered last, at the end of last year.
I know a lot of that money came from when we, we got supplies and we repainted Riverdale fence, and we had to paint that twice because it was so bad.
Okay.
So I know a lot of that, but off the top of my head.
Okay, so not stuff that we would expect needs to be done again?
No.
And so we're not, we're not worried about missing something because only the...
We are gonna paint Beaver Dam, but that's, that'll probably be half that. But we do like to leave a little in there in case we have stones that are broke or whatnot.
You had trees to remove at Riverdale, still?
Yeah, so this past summer, we had, we removed trees. They brought the crane in and took those rotten trees out. We do have, we, so we're going on, like, this year, we're gonna put ten thousand dollars in and remove so many, and then next year, we're gonna put ten thousand dollars in and remove the rest of them. I really don't think there's much down there, but before they do it, we'll get a, we'll get an estimate. If it's worth anything, you know, they'll take that off from the ten thousand.
Oh, so they do sell the trees if they can sell the wood?
If they're worth anything.
Yeah.
And I think, I think the worth part is not what it costs. It would, what eats it up is the cost to actually come in with the crane.
With the crane, I mean, when they, when they did that last job, they had to take half the fence down and go in with the crane and put the fence back, so, yeah.
Unless there's a sizable sale.
Yes, it's not like we would see it as a revenue, it just might offset a little bit of the cost.
Yeah, well, yeah, they might not charge as much.
Right.
They'll say, "Oh, I could get..."
I can use the...
Couple thousand or something maybe out of this, yeah.
Okay.
And then you had some trees at Corsair Hill as well.
Yeah, we have, they're old spruce trees, and usually, they fall down, and it takes care of them. Each one is a thousand bucks, so there's three or four up there that need to come down.
So are these things that would then come out of the trust funds that we already have? And or be shown as addition to that?
Right now, we've added it into the budget.
Okay.
So that it would come on the operating budget.
Okay, so all of that is talking back here.
Right.
Sounds good. I think that is a reasonable place to start with, anyway. Puts all the changes in one place. Any other questions?
Then we have parks for now. Deal with me while I tell Mary to come up.
We added the porta potty to this budget. It's the sport, usually the sports committee. I don't, they, they, did they ever pay that day, or has it always been out of our...
They have, we have paid for the soccer and for the soccer field for the last few years. This was really the first year we had it down at the park for the summer.
Now, do we...
An old home, well, they use it at Old Homestead, but...
Old Homestead got their own, too.
I under, yeah, and I was gonna talk to, I figured, Heidi, about that.
Yeah. Now, do we still give the sports committee money, the town, as a town?
The, the sports? No.
We don't?
No.
Yeah, because it's no longer the, like, Webster Soccer, whatever.
Blue Storm or something. So we, we added a thousand fifty dollars in there, and also, we added this, three trees down at the park that needs to be cut.
Can I go get her?
I'm just calling her.
Okay.
Come on out.
Does that make sense as to the addition?
Oh, that was Stephanie, yeah.
For parks and recs, cemeteries here, is there a better way or a fund that we would already normally be saving in for trees instead of bouncing the budget around?
I'm not aware that there has any sort of procedure in the past that has...
Do we have any funds that would make sense to take from that and to start doing that with for, for the future?
I would have to look and see, when you say "take from it," that it already has been put into trust funds, you mean, that might be available for trees?
Yeah, so, for example, like, because we have municipal property maintenance.
Well, that's, we have...
We could certainly add more to it, and if we could take some from it to do this, and, like, I don't know if that makes sense or not, but it seems like...
Well, we are having...
That would make the budget just be budget-y.
I think that, and maybe I'm wrong, Brenda, so correct me if I am, but I don't think that the town has done a lot of tree maintenance for a number of years.
We haven't.
And so, all of a sudden, we have several trees that are problems. But in that fund that you mentioned, well, we have fourteen thousand dollars in that fund, but...
Has it been funded this year yet?
Is it, I'm sorry, we have, yes, we have, we have funded it.
Okay.
So, I mean, you always could have the conversation, if you wanted to, put a specific amount aside for trees.
Yeah, if we put some into that.
That might be the account you could use.
Okay, so we can talk about that later, as long as we cover what needs to be done.
Brenda's got, like, down in the park, there's a giant pine tree that's dead.
I'm not saying don't take care of the trees.
No, I know, but, yeah.
Couple of dead ones and a wiener.
All right. Any other thoughts, questions?
Thanks for coming, all right. Your turn, Mary. Come on down!
That is the clerk's budget. We ought to be out of here in five minutes.
All right, we'll just put the meeting to pass forward.
Mary, that's a very good place.
I do like watching meetings at 1.5 times speed.
So, thankfully, I didn't put this away yet.
It's hot tonight.
This is the first full year that you've had a deputy, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, she's been here since, what, January?
Yeah, I was gonna say, or almost a full, almost a full year.
Yeah.
And that's really worked out very nicely.
Oh, it's been a blessing.
Yeah.
Really has been.
Yeah.
She's, she's quick to pick things up, and...
Yeah.
We work really well together.
Well, I think that, and I'm not trying to get rid of you, Mary, but you know, it's, you have someone that could step in.
Oh, that's the plan.
Yeah.
It really is, because this was not a career move that I had planned on making, so...
You're both friendly, and you both get it, so it's great.
Yeah, so, yeah, and she's flexible, and she's more anal with, with making charts and organization and three-ring binders, so it's been a good...
That's crazy. I know how you are with that, that's crazy.
She's the new people out of my life.
So you had asked for an increase in the deputy wages. Last year, you had eleven thousand, and this year, you're proposing eighteen thousand. And you had some ideas that you told me about, why you thought that would be appropriate.
So right now, she's working eight hours a week, the budgeted hours, but she's actually doing more than that. The volume is such down there that, we even talked about it tonight, we've not had really a slow period of time when we've both been there, other than maybe the dinner hour, you know, for us, six to seven. Before that, it's sometimes a line, and even after seven, right up to eight-twenty, we can have people just filtering in. Plus, there's projects we've been working on, getting our, kind of, the nine-one-one listing put together, which hadn't been worked on for years, so it's a process of elimination of, nope, that person doesn't live there anymore, this one does, or this one's writing from so-and-so. It's been pretty involved, so we've taken the motor vehicle listing against the voter registration listing, against, we've got, like, three or four different listings that she's been cross-referencing. So hopefully, but that's a long, tedious project she's been working on. So it's time for those things that we can certainly fill in any downtime that we might have. Plus, this election season's been a little busy.
No one cares about this election.
Yes, we do.
Who's bringing the teapot?
I'm, I'm looking to increase her hours another eight hours a week to justify. So it'll be sixteen hours a week, same hours that I work. She'll be with me Monday and Wednesday. Of course, if either one of us is sick, we're gonna be there anyway, so it worked out really well. And then, the increase would be another dollar an hour in pay. Double the hours, but just a dollar more an hour in pay. It came to, like, seventeen, something.
It was seventeen, seven forty-two, or something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
So the, the only thing that I will mention there, because we mention it every time raises come up for anybody, we do need to have a reviewer on file to use for the raise.
I was just gonna ask that, actually, you know, do you do, you know, annual reviews?
We do, and I'll work with you on that.
Because hers would be coming up in January, so I definitely would have that on file.
Yeah, we usually do them, we're trying to do them now before the end of the year, so that we're ready for the, to recommend raises.
Yeah, generally, what we've been trying to do to not worry about, like, oh, there isn't anything, we're gonna retroactive this versus that, is it's the new rate on the start of the year, because we have finished all of the evaluations and we have all the paperwork.
Gotcha, okay.
And that way, the budget number is the budget number, and it just works.
Yep, yep, that's perfect. So when would you want that review by?
If I could have it by the end of November, I'd be happy.
Something with your town clerk report, but then...
Yeah.
Am I allowed to ask what that makes the hourly rate at?
For her, for Stephanie, twenty-one.
It's twenty now, we're asking for twenty-one.
Right, right, okay, yeah, good question.
Yeah.
The town clerk's stipend, right now, it's at forty thousand. We put in forty-one, which is two and a half percent increase, which is what your policy is.
And I didn't ask for one last year.
And so, and, and again...
And then, election wages, we're downplaying that because we just have one election next year, which is the town election. So we're not gonna need all that funding, so it kind of compensates, for this year, anyway, for that.
Mary's worked hard to keep the Clerk Association dues.
I'm trying hard not to forget to pay.
The workshops and conventions, and I asked you about this, Mary, but the last, the previous two years, because you were new and Stephanie was new, we put extra money in for training.
We didn't need it.
And we're kind of beyond that now.
Yeah. So I think two thousand is more than enough for any additional training. Election, there's a lot of changes coming up in election, and there's also some changes coming up in motor vehicle. They're going to be having the town clerks process veterans plates, as well as antique plates, which now, they have to do the town portion and then go to the state to get. So I think that's coming up in January, February, so we'll have some training on that.
What will the town have for revenue on that?
I really don't know if it's gonna be different than the regular passenger plates or not. But it'll be a little bit additional. What's that?
Litting on weight?
No, not on weight. Just adding more.
Mary, and clerk supplies, would you explain about this issue with the state of what they're famous for? Is downloading?
Yeah, so this is something fairly, fairly new. We went to the annual conference in Nashua, the three-day conference, and the Secretary of State's office said that, you know, the one-for-all? That we have the big white tent for the handicap, how to hearing and seeing?
Oh, yep, yep, yep.
We set that up for state and general elections, because the state sends us the tablet that we put on a loading dock, and then it'll, it's already programmed with the election in it. So we print the ballot after someone has already chosen their candidates, and so that's how that system works. So the state programs this tablet, the tablet comes to the clerks. We test it out, and at the end of the night, that tablet goes back to the state. The state is now putting all this on the towns and cities to do, period. So starting with the town election next year, they will provide us with a tablet, but we have to have it programmed. So they use a vendor called Democracy Live to program these tablets, and the cost can be anywhere from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred, depending on how large this ballot could be. Yeah. That's not, that's not all.
Oh, wait, there's more.
There's more. So the town, the state owns all that equipment. We would have to buy the tablet, buy the docking station, buy the printer, buy whatever else is needed in order to run that program. I, I do not have any of the particulars yet, because the state hasn't ironed all that out yet. And it can be anywhere from four to seven thousand dollars down the road.
So there, for next year, you have one election, and they're gonna let you use their tablet?
Yes, we have to program the tablet, so I gotta find out the timing of it.
And sometime by the end of the year, you're gonna have to plan on getting equipment.
Yes.
I think I just found a new career.
There you go, kid!
Yeah, yeah. So because of that, I'm anticipating, just to get the tablet programmed for our town election, that eight, about eighteen hundred dollars. May not be that much, but that's just getting that one tablet programmed. When you have a year that you have four elections, you're looking at that times four. And I really know how that all is gonna work. All right. Yeah, so there may be more training because of that as well, I don't know. I really don't know, it's hard to anticipate for myself, when they have not given us much information. And I wrote back to the email I got from the state, saying, "The towns right now are preparing their budgets for next year, we need to know what we're looking at."
That's right.
And what'd they say?
Ignoring us!
Let me tell you!
So there could be some surprises.
I mean, I could build a system that would do that for that much, and then we'd never have to think about it again.
Well, there we go, that's what we keep you.
Well, there might be, like, you know, five hundred dollars in, in it for you, Dave.
If you buy the equipment, damn. Just saying.
So anyway...
That's really, to, to, like, develop an image and then charge every town eighteen to twenty-five hundred dollars for what? If you know that all the hardware's basically the same, is two to five hours' work at the most.
But that's what your brain says. My brain says, "Oh, thank God, I wouldn't want to do that." You know, because it's, you know, it is understanding with me.
Once, once it's programmed with an election, all you do is change the names and the title.
Well, there you go, so...
I do the same thing with the little ballot counting slips now. I have it all in the same format, but I just go in and rename it, and put different names and titles in. So, same idea. I mean, I could probably do it myself, this tablet.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you probably wouldn't be able to, because that wouldn't pass muster.
Well, if we own the tablets, we can do whatever we want to with it.
Oh, good, good point.
See, again, I would think with every single election, you'd have to send a sample ballot to the state for them to approve.
Which would be fine.
To make sure it's set up correctly, which would be okay, but, you know, there's a timed process.
Then you make it the same as the ballot's supposed to be, and, yeah, this should be easy, but, yeah.
You could pay me the fifteen hundred for election.
So, well, that sucks, but thank you for noticing and taking and putting it in there.
That's in there, just anticipate next year's gonna be a nightmare.
Any further questions, comments, things you want to present or talk about?
No, we're just looking to, at no cost to the town, Stephanie and I are gonna paint the office, and with Gordon's help, we're gonna build a longer counter, and then maybe we'll talk with IT, that could be the expense there, to move the computer from the desk over to the counter. So we both are at the counter.
Okay.
Because it's gotten too crazy, the people trying to come into the office, so whoever sits at the desk can wait on them, and then there's no place for them to sign paperwork, it's just awkward. And we've had many, many instances where I'm just not comfortable with people coming into the office like that.
And it even feels weird to walk back there, to be honest with you.
It does, yeah.
Even when we were working on that thing, we were working on...
Because it was always like, no man's land, no, don't go there.
Yeah, because it's like anywhere.
Plus, the counter, full counter across, we have an entrance on the, on the opposite side by the window. Gives us more security.
Right.
And then, if I need to use a conference room for absentee ballot fillouts, things, they can come in the conference room in the hallway. So it works logistically.
Yeah.
So we're looking to just update that, so there could be an IT cost involved in switching wires over or something. But we'll look at that when we get there.
And we can probably just move them for you.
Yeah. I don't know how involved, you know, how much length we have to work with, but we can look at that. Okay, perfect. That's all I got.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
No more questions?
I'm good.
Nope.
He's fallen asleep.
It's the best kind of budget, the right kind. That's what we gotta expect, okay.
It's getting dark. Our bodies say it's time for bed.
All right. Oh, revales, property revales.
This is, this is a favorite.
We, now we get to...
Oh, we already revale.
Now we get to be charged for watching paint dry.
We have, well, there's three, three lines in the revaluation budget. The general assessing, the revaluation of the town as a whole, and the utility appraiser. So I'm gonna start from the bottom and go up. The utility appraiser, we have a contract, and we know that's the cost of what it's going to be. It's been the same cost since we hired Sansousi appraisers to do the utilities. The revaluation of property contract is a contract, and we know what that's going to be, and that's for one-fourth of the town to be listed and measured. The general assessing is a little hard to pinpoint, because it depends on the number of pickups and the number of abatements and the number of resident queries. And as you see, this year, we did not budget enough last year, so I did increase that by just under two thousand dollars, nineteen fifty to be exact, in hoping that that would cover what we need to do.
Do you expect that to remain at the higher value, or is a lot of that because we just finished the rebalance?
Part of that is for that reason, but I also know that we're going to have, how many is on Little Hill Road that you're gonna be adding pickups? Three, or the subdivision, so it's gonna come...
It's gonna be six lots, and we also have more building permits this year than we used to, probably three more building permits than we used to.
So I think that's kind of what I had in mind when I went there.
This year's been pretty busy.
I mean, you know, right now, the budget itself looks fine, because we haven't paid for the rebound this year yet, so...
When we look at building permits, subdivisions, et cetera, I know that in the past, when we've looked at fee schedules, it's commonly, like, we're trying to make back an average or close to what's gonna be there. Are we also accounting for the amount that we expect we'll probably have to spend in assessing in those values? Or should they maybe be a little higher?
Not for the building permits or for the subdivisions, I would say no.
I would think it'd be very unusual to charge for pickups to add to our assessment base.
Well, I was thinking, like, if it's a, if it's a brand-new building, we should know that that amount is there, and if we're trying to roughly break even, we should have that be that much more.
I could, I could look into, I've never heard of it, that happening.
Okay.
And that's what I'm a little concerned about, but we certainly can look into that.
Well, because I, I wanted to readjust our...
Well, I just feel funny, you know, okay, we're gonna tax assess you, but you have to pay for your own assessment.
Well, I think we need to look at it anyway, because a lot of the people who've been getting building permits call for a lot more inspections than the regular people do, so...
Well, you charge them, yeah, the inspection, and you do a good job with that.
Well, yeah, I expect somebody to get...
This is another charge.
Oh, yes, I know, but I, I'm just saying, I wanna look at the building permit fees this year anyway, because I think people have been doing, I don't think we're breaking even.
I mean, this is what they call a pickup or the split, which is a subdivision, yeah. But that's a good question, though, and I'm...
Write that down, so I remember it. Cause I mean, it, it, it's not that like it would add into the line or anything like that, but just the revenue that would come in would be closer to what would go out.
I understand, okay.
Anything further on this? Not for me, no. Alright.
Nothing too scary yet.
Oh, this is, this is the scary one.
Okay, so this is you, Russ.
So this was.
This is in, Russ is our code enforcement.
How we talked about in these meetings with the potential of hiring a person for code enforcement. So I sort of put this in as a placeholder. I was looking at NHMA to find the wages for what a code enforcement person would make. And I saw anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five dollars an hour, so I factored in about eight hours a week. So maybe four hours worth of office time and then four hours in the field time during the week. And these are the figures that you see before you for what we came in to. And then I figured we would also probably need an additional five thousand for legal on top of this. Because obviously, as a code enforcement person, we're probably gonna end up in court at least once or twice a year doing the enforcement action. But this is just a placeholder, I figured there would be more discussion about what we felt would be. There, I think there are several options and ways we can go, but this, I feel, is the most straightforward option.
I think we're trying to respond to the desire to have our codes enforced.
Right, yes. And so I, I see that the septic review is up as well. And so is septic review and code inspection both up because, for example, you got more building permits and stuff?
Thanks, can I say something about septic review? And I don't know how that works, but the state are, when you put a septic, and the state's already doing the inspections. And they'll fail it if it's not correct, so there's really no reason to have a septic review in a town.
I'm still not a hundred percent on why we do the septic reviews, other than.
We need to talk about, I mean, granted, I know it's only eleven hundred dollars, but that's eleven hundred dollars, really, this town does not need to spend.
Yeah, well.
It's, it's kinda like double, double enforcement, and in a matter of fact, no disrespect to the person doing the review, the state, you know, the state is the one that's licensed to know what they're doing.
I think it's just, this is what we inherited.
Yeah.
And I agree with you.
So how do you go about eliminating that?
Um, I think that you would just, I think you'd be well within your capability of deciding not to do that anymore, just to rely on the state's approval.
Is that in zoning, or where is that?
I would have to look at that.
That's the only thing.
The only thing that I know of that we use the septic plans for is for knowing when development is happening for one purpose, and then it's used in the building permit process as one of the requirements for getting a building permit, is we wanna see your septic plan.
But there again, you've already have to file, you pay for having that.
I mean, I can certainly see.
You can get as many copies as you want.
Must have, must have an approved septic.
Yeah.
And that is also.
Building permit.
Yeah.
I'll remind you, one of the things that's offset with revenue as well, cause we get two hundred and fifty dollars for every septic review that we do.
It probably part of it, and I'm just coming with that, the state approves the plan. And then our guy goes out and looks before it's buried. I don't think the state comes.
Yes, they do.
Do they?
Oh, yes, they do.
They're supposed to.
No, no, Dave, they, you will not get approval, and they will, they, no. A septic design is filed with the state, you install it to a certain spot.
Okay.
They then come out and review it, cause you're not allowed to cover it. And the regulations that go along with that come to, you put it in. They, you leave it open, they come out within a week, they review it, they make sure that the D-box is hit, coached upright. Please, nobody quote me exactly, cause I don't put them on myself. And then, and then, then you're not allowed to cover it over until you get the yay. And if they see anything they don't like, they will fail you, and then you have to fix it, and then they come back. Then you cover it, and then you are required to lumen. So that is all for a state-approved septic.
So they're checking to be sure that it was installed as designed?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yes, and don't be off a little left, and don't be off a little right, cause then you have to do an ASB.
Okay.
And that is possible to do, but you better have that in place before you continue.
And that's one of the things that we don't charge for is ASB.
Yeah.
We don't charge for ASBs, we don't charge for failed septics.
Well, again, I.
That's why it's kinda like we lose money on those.
Why don't you check the code and see what?
Yeah.
I just don't see why you would doubly do something, that is a really strong thing, I feel.
Oh, I don't disagree.
I think a lot of the times, it has to do with the enforcement of local regulations when it comes to septics, but I'm not aware of really any that we have in Alabam.
If there were something, for example, more stringent in a wetlands ordinance.
Right.
Or a hillside ordinance.
Hold on.
Then it might make sense that the town would also have a more stringent and different septic review.
Could be, but.
But if it's, we're using whatever the state is, yeah, it doesn't make sense.
And, well, I suppose stringent, but there again, to approve the septic, you have to have a licensed septic designer. It's not like you can just, you know, I mean, you can actually put it in yourself if it's for yourself, but then again, the state has to come out, the state has to approve it. So.
That would be a disaster.
Listen, it's really not right.
We might get into a crappy situation. But yeah, I will look further into that, I made a note, I'm, I'm gonna call New Hampshire D E S about it, ask them about it. Cause I've asked Tom, he wasn't too certain.
Well, and he's the one doing the inspections, so that's a little.
So that doesn't give you a little.
That's a little, that's a little interesting.
Doesn't give you fuzzies.
Yeah.
Do we know what, for example, Hopkinton does, they, they have somebody on staff for code enforcement and everything, right?
Yes, they do.
Kind of got a relationship with Neil, I know some, I know a guy who does.
It, it.
Yeah, I know a guy's name.
I know that we've asked for like some nearby towns when we've done inspection, and that's how we found Tom, and he's been great for inspecting codes. But if we're trying to move towards enforcement, be interesting to find out if, is, is, for example, Hopkinton's inspector actually busy all the time? Is he full-time and doesn't really need quite that much, or whatever? Maybe we can send them some money and he does the inspect, the enforcement with us. Uh, so we should explore that before we like try to put anything in the budget.
That's one of the options that I wanted to talk about too, we'd still need to put something in for the budget.
And we're certainly gonna do that, yeah.
But, but we kinda need to have the plan and knowledge of what might work before we put it into a budget.
I understand, I think we put it in just to be sure that we didn't let it.
Well, that, we wanted the direction from the board of where we wanted to go and talk about a little bit, so we gotta get your general thoughts on where you wanted to go with it.
You would think any surrounding towns, we all could kinda share, but I think a lot of them are retired builders.
Yes.
Which is what the one in town in Hopkinton, but. But that doesn't mean that he wouldn't like to pick up, I mean.
And, and several of the other towns don't necessarily do a whole lot more enforcement. So that doesn't really change anything at that point.
So this is the planning and zoning budget, and this is an easy one.
Yeah, really.
Nothing's different.
Nothing's different, I'm keeping it flat. I feel like we may not have spent everything, and we spent about half of it so far. But I also am hesitant, because of what happened a couple of years ago, to reduce it, because if we get one court case, that all goes away very quickly.
Very fast, like lightning.
I feel like it's in a good spot, and I don't think it needs to be messed with.
Well, I do like telling the police department I'm hitting the budget for over.
For what, for what?
Well, that's the other thing, it's like even though.
It's not a very popular thing.
Even though we don't spend the workshops and everything, if we do get a legal case, it's a nice place to be able to pull money, probably if we needed to.
Yeah. The, the only thing that I would say there is that with trying to keep the budget being the budget, not the in-case, and since we have funds, for example, for legal, it might make sense to, for example, instead of forty-five hundred, make it four thousand or thirty-five hundred. Put the extra five hundred or a thousand to the legal fund.
Right.
Instead of putting it.
Well, that's true, I also don't know what the dues are for Central New Hampshire Planning Commission are, and that's about two thousand five hundred to three thousand of that budget line right there. So that's gonna be something to keep in mind, and I'll probably know what that is by Friday, maybe next week.
Okay.
And we are fortunate that we do have funds that in the event we did have that happen, that we could cover.
So I, I, I would simply suggest, ma- make a note in, cause I don't have the digital one up right now, but make a note that for the legal line, maybe we move five hundred of that to the legal fund from here.
Makes sense.
So it's more of the in-case and we hang on to it, instead of in-case and we hang on to it, but don't use it.
So we're going to reduce five hundred from that line?
But put it in, but try and add five hundred into the legal expense fund. Which hopefully, we don't need to touch either, but. Alright, um, looks like that's all of them for today, do we have any further?
No, that was the last of them.
Okay, that brings us to new business, which is the audit.
So I believe I sent you the audit, um, electronically a week or so ago.
That was also, uh, with the packet in the email.
Okay, good. If anyone wanted a, their own personal copy, I have a couple of extra copies, it's, you'll like how it comes out. I, I guess my comment on that, um, we had basically very similar comments last year. And, um, some of these things that we need to work on this year would be, um, an IT policy, especially in light of, um, this cyber theft and that type of thing. We have a couple of things they always ding us on, and one is the, we don't hire an actuary for the retirement. I don't think that's a huge thing, because we don't have that many employees. If we had a hundred fifty employees, that we'd have to have better figures, but I think we kinda know what it is.
And then they dip into your retirement.
And.
That's the way I feel about that.
That one, uh, the other thing is, um, they always bring up that we should have someone else do the bank deposits, because Wendy writes the checks and she's also, um, depositing to the bank, which would leave me, and I'm trying to stay out of that. And actually, usually, town administrator doesn't handle money either, but that doesn't happen all the time, yeah.
Cause you're the one authorizing to spend it.
You know, yeah, exactly, so I mean, you know, it's, it's the, the dual control is, is really what it is. So they have a letter that kinda gives you what they have done, it's the same letter they give you every year with the words that reassure you that they've actually looked at this. The maintenance of the capital asset records, which I can do that, um, which I will start doing that. The other thing that bothered me a little bit was they were talking about the funds in the general ledger were not accounted for, which puzzled me because, and those are basically all the impact fees, all the impact accounts that we have. And they're in another category because they technically don't belong entirely to us. And so I've gotta work out with the auditors exactly what they mean by that, how I can show that differently. They always have a comment that we need more training.
Well, why is that a different comment now than the many years pre, prior, when it's always been done the same?
It isn't a different comment, but it bothers, all of a sudden now, I've come to the realization, why are they telling me this? So I guess it's the same comment that they make every year, but I would like not to have it anymore, and just, okay, if that's their point, I'll do it however they want us to do it.
Maybe when they copy and paste, I've got to take that out?
Well. You, you know, and I'm not, I'm not criticizing, but I do.
Yeah, but I mean, it seems kinda weird.
But I do think, we did have another instance, they had a couple more, and I said, we've already fixed those.
Yeah.
And, um, so I think, I, and, and I think that's apt to happen. Um, we had talked about having a different team, it's very hard to change firms right at the moment, cause there's just not many that wanna do this. However, the problem was, they didn't have another available team either. And I don't wanna not have an audit, um, so. And I think what they're looking for basically is fraud.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You know.
Well, and their recommendations are what they feel should happen, but in every, every incident is not gonna be like, we're, you know, when you're this small, it's kinda like in our company, we don't ha, we're not lucky enough to have a full-time safety director.
Right.
You know what I mean, because you can't afford to do that. You know, and the same here, we'd have to staff probably another whole person, if two, two, maybe not a whole person, but you know what I mean?
You don't wanna have an audit that says everything was absolutely wonderful.
No, cause that was a little fishy too.
Because obviously, you know that's not the case.
Right. But that's, that's pretty much to me an A-plus.
You know.
Especially if it's just what they see, that, you know, somebody else make a deposit out, I mean. Also, sometimes being this small, it's a lot harder to hide things than when you're bigger.
Well, we.
I think.
We have a lot of eyes on the same transaction.
That's what I mean, that's what I mean, yeah. Unlike maybe this department, this department, this department, it's in this department.
Right.
Yeah, and other things like, you know, gatsby this and gatsby that, like, yes, it's an ideal way to do it, but again, it's the whole size, like, if you're trying to do it for a city, it matters, because you're dealing with, you know, a thousand employees. And we've got three and like, not, not a whole lot of town-owned equipment, like.
That's right, too.
We don't have the town-owned equipment of like an entire DPW that needs to go through evaluations and depreciations and everything else. We, we have a couple fire trucks.
Yep.
So it's, it's a lot different for us than.
Quite well made.
Than maybe, so.
So the audit itself, it does show things like your equipment value and the depreciation and the things you would expect. It also shows what they came out with for fund balance, um, at the end of the year, fund balance.
I know, every time you say that, I'm like, where are we going?
So that would, that would give you, um, an idea of what you would have to either offset the tax rate or do something else. Or nothing else.
Well, asking now, can we try to get another team over there, so that we have different eyes?
Well, I will do that.
May, maybe.
I mean, I think that would.
Maybe if we're ahead of it, then we can get the extra, the different team or the different set of eyes, but, cause I, I know we like them and they.
I like the team, I mean, it's nothing, it's nothing against that, it's nothing against them, and I realize, um, and I think we should consider ourselves lucky, that basically, we have a very small.
Well, and hopefully, to, they take that in consideration when they send their team out, different or not. Most likely, they're gonna find the same thing in my mind, but, um, you know, they've already, are warmed up to it, so hopefully, they take that consideration when they give us our quote.
And they don't do it the same every year, I mean, one year, they're, they're trying to focus on one thing, and the next year, they'll focus on something else. They have no interest with the company of the hundred eighty-six dollars we have in petty cash.
Yeah. It might just, if anything, be interesting to get a, a second price just to see, because, like I say, they, they pretty much, when they know you inside it out, you know.
Right.
That's not always a bad thing either, cause it should not be as tedious.
Well, but, like, even just asking for, for a different team at the same firm for a year, like, that, that shouldn't change anything, really.
Exactly, yes, as if they're all following their same rules.
Supposedly, I would assume so, so.
Bad word.
But I can certainly, I can certainly talk to, uh.
Well, and I might, when if I ta- I would just say, hey, there's some things on here that we know we're not, this is what it is. But you have that question, I would definitely ask that question and just say, so, you know, is it? How does this hold the teams being different and having another set of eyes, I'd like this answer.
Well, you could be right, it might, it might not make any difference, and if they have a comment to make, they're going to make it. And, and what their comments are, I'm not disagreeing with the comments at all.
Well, they're very, they're minute in a sense, in my mind.
Cause they're very, very small and, and, yeah, and I'm glad they are minute.
That's right.
Yes.
Okay, smoky.
That's good.
Alright.
Anything further?
No, you'll be glad to know, I'm done.
Are you done with the folders?
Um, we're getting there.
Almost, so that moves us to correspondence.
I know, that's right.
We have no correspondence.
Oh, folder number two shut.
Alright, uh, so that brings us to public comment.
Just here to join in the fun?
His folder's shut too.
I was only thinking about, back a long time ago, saw at one of the meetings, you had mentioned something about the town clerk. Having a place for the line of people that are waiting and not in the hallway, I just wondered if anything had ever been. That had gone any further, I know you don't have any space, so.
That's, that's the issue, and I, I, I did mention that, um, and Mary has come up with, well, it's not a complete solving of that.
Right.
But she's come up with this new office configuration that she's mentioning, that should help eliminate it. And I will say, um, I guess when I'm thinking of someone waiting, it seems to me this, it's so small. And I'm like this far from you listening to what you're doing and, you know, I don't particularly.
But that, you know what, even in the sized town of like Henneker, you, you don't, you don't have like a special waiting room. You know, you got, they got two windows, two people helping you, I think three sometimes.
Well, then almost everything with.
And a person's over here.
Public information.
Yeah, right, it's all public information anyway, it doesn't make any difference.
The thing I would say there is there, when there was lots of talk about reconfigurations, for example, instead of a hallway coming into a, a. Waiting room that would then go towards the town administrators, the town clerk, et cetera. Um, part of that was because there was expectation that there would be extra COVID money to be able to use to do that. Uh, but the second part of that, when we, when there was COVID money available to do that and we actually went down the line of looking at possibly doing stuff like that. The construction of the building is such that the supports don't really lend themselves to that without a lot of work. So. At this point, it is most likely going to be that they just stay within the rooms and maybe there can be a little more space in the room for waiting, but.
And I think with the two, she, that's what she's working towards, the two helping you, it shouldn't, you know, that's, that's more than some towns, big towns have, so. I think ultimately, and actually, we're fairly fortunate to have two people.
That both know what they're doing?
Yeah, and so, so ultimately, yeah, we're already kind of ahead of some of these big towns.
That's made a big difference in lines going up the hall and, and, cause we don't really get that many people waiting that long anymore.
Right. So, I think they're doing a great job.
Thank you.
But yeah, exactly.
It's always good to have extra remembrance of, hey, I thought we were gonna try to do, so that we remember to not forget these things.
Well, I appreciate that too, I was trying to cover it over so Dean wouldn't ask.
Speaking along that same line of, uh, things that we intended to do, uh, have, have you now got somebody that's actually coming to deal with the stairs and, and similar? I know we talked about it, but.
Well, this is a great, I've got someone who is going to fix the front steps.
Oh, thank God.
Before, before the election, so that no one goes through the stairs.
It looks like one of the steps at the bottom of the front's about to crack off at the same way.
Okay, well, we will make sure it's broken before they come.
Right.
They're supposed to come, um, someone is coming to give us another price on the back area over here. The Unitil is coming and meeting with the electrician that we hired tomorrow, I believe, to look, to talk about upgrading the electric service. The heating people were here today and they'll be here tomorrow, wiring things through the ceiling to the heat pumps.
So are we using trek stairs or something, are we using wood again so it can rot again?
Well, they're gonna give us a price on, on that trek, on trek, on both, yeah.
On both, okay, okay. Yeah. Okay.
For just the back or also the front?
Um, you know, I just asked them to fix the front because I didn't ask them to fix the entire thing. I just wanted that to be a quick and dirty.
Okay.
Fix.
And then the next time, we can do it with treks.
I think it's good, yeah, I think it's something we should really think about, then we won't have to do it for a long time.
Exactly, and you don't have to think about it again.
Spend more money, it's gonna be upfront and then we won't have to have this stuff and people saying, what's wrong with you people?
Okay. Um, is there anything else in your folders before we go to our motions and approvals?
Um, no, there isn't, I'm, I've just got the minutes that I'm looking at.
He just keeps looking at those minutes?
Alright, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
Sure have, they look fantastic. Did you find anything, Dave?
I glanced through them, I did not see anything.
No spelling error?
I didn't try to look at every single word perfectly.
As long as they don't spell your name wrong, you're all set.
I don't even do that find and replace anymore, cause he's got it.
It's been a while, I can figure out the name at this point.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we accept these October seventh meeting minutes, that's.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, minutes, do we have any further signings and motions?
Yes, you do.
I shouldn't have said it.
Should've just closed the meeting real quick and ran it.
That's for the electric bill.
Oh, but that's not a lot.
That's just for the electric bill?
Mm-hmm.
Holy, that would be.
You know, it's funny, cause they said that, you know, we made too much, but we've certainly been using it.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure they looked at the wrong period of time or something, just to favorably say it, but. Uh, any others?
No, I'm done, that's all.
Anything else to be brought up by the board?
Nope.
Anything that, uh, public would like to have brought up? Alright, seeing no further, I would move to close meeting at seven twenty-seven. All in favor?
Aye. Record time.
Wow.
Yeah, really, holy, that.
My goodness, well, I'd say I might get home before dark, but apparently.